Okay. I will call the meeting to order for this reorganizational meeting of the school board at 6:00 PM. Roll call, everyone is here, that's on the list, all that means everybody. So if we'd all like to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So now we'll go into the Minnesota School Board Member oath of office. I'll go through the top part here and then when we get down to the asterisks, we'll all read that together. It is an honor that you were elected to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a Director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and other members of our school board in the position of being both morally and legally responsible for equitable, quality education of every student in the district. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board with extensive participation of the community, envisions the community's educational future, and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for the public schools. To achieve the vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a board, we must be accountable to the community, we must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, we serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision for our schools. Furthermore, we must strive to work together with the Superintendent and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision we have created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills and knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. So now would the three of us read this together? Do we need to stand? No, okay, just in all official, you guys want it to be. Okay, so, having signed the acceptance of office and oath of office, I hereby publicly affirm my commitment to the oath of office. I swear affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state, and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the Office of School Board Member of Independent School District Number 499 to the best of my judgment and ability. And then we sign and date it, please, and then we'll wait.
We say, "Welcome aboard."
Okay, so then we move to the next agenda item, changes to agenda. Jen has it highlighted, there was some wording wrong. We normally always specify that the school board chair and the superintendent have contact and are able to contact the school attorney that we approved. Need a, I'd be looking for a motion to approve that change.
I'll move.
Motion by Dave.
Second.
Second by Chad. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Now we go to the approval of agenda, be looking to approve or for the agenda approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Pat.
Second.
Second by Dave. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Now we move on to the discussion of action, or action of items, election of officers, oath of office. So for Chairperson, I will ask three times for nomination for Chairperson.
I would like to nominate Deb Rayburn.
Okay, there's a nomination for Deb. Are there any further nominations for Chairperson?
I'll nominate Dave Lunning.
Okay, Dave has a nomination. Are there any further nominations for Chairperson? Hearing none, nominations for Chair are closed. All those in favor of nominating Deb for the Chairperson, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Say aye.
I think we would vote in favor of the other person.
Yeah, we'll have to, I guess what we'll have to do to determine, can we see, raise a hands that were in favor of Deb, please? Chad, okay, all those opposed to Deb? I'm just asking, I'm just asking.
I think it's say who's in favor of.
Sorry, yes, all those in favor of Deb?
No.
You did that.
Oh, Dave, sorry, two D's, sorry. Okay, all those in favor of Dave, please raise your hand. Okay, Dave, Kyle, and Dave Farlinger. Okay, so knowing that, I'd be looking for a motion to accept Deb as the new Chairperson.
I'll make a motion to approve Deb as the Chairperson.
Second?
I'll second.
Second by Chad. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion, or, any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, they opposed. Motion carries. Congratulations, Deb. You are the board's Chairperson.
No.
No?
I mean, three and three.
Okay, all right, I was asking if you wanted to.
No, 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 we're good, we're good. All right, so. The next thing on the agenda then is to elect a Vice Chairperson. So, let me see. Is there any nominations for Vice Chair?
I make a nomination to... Well, I'll just, yeah, I'll nominate Pat for Vice Chair.
Pat Arndorfer is nominated for Vice Chair, are there any further nominations for Vice Chair? Third call, are there any further nominations for the Office of Vice Chairperson? If there are no further nominations, the nominations for Office of Vice Chair are closed. I will call for a vote, all those in favor of Pat Arndorfer as Vice Chair, aye?
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, so Pat Arndorfer, Vice Chair. I will now accept nominations for the Treasurer.
Would you have to...
I'm sorry, what?
Have the motion and second, to accept it first? No?
I just did.
Well, yeah, I did because I was looking at the list, I guess.
Okay, I can do that.
Well, I just...
Okay, I make them, or wait, did someone make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
For Pat Arndorfer, okay, and second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of Pat Arndorfer for Vice Chair?
Aye.
And all those opposed? Okay, thank you.
I understand why.
Thank you for catching it.
Not necessary, probably, but yeah.
This is new, this is new, we'll learn as we go here. Okay, so now we move to nominations for Treasurer. Nominations are now in order for the Office of Treasurer.
I nominate Dave if you're willing.
Might as well jump in with both feet, right?
Are there any further nominations for Office of Treasurer? Am I allowed to make a nomination? So I nominate Tim for Treasurer. All right, are there any further nominations for the Office of Treasurer? And final call, are there any further nominations for the Office of Treasurer? Okay, we'll do a vote, those who would like, let's see now, how do I do this, raise a hands if you would like to have Dave Farlinger in the position of Treasurer. Okay, thank you, and raise a hands for Tim in the position of Treasurer. All right. Seeing as the vote, would someone like to make a motion to have Dave Farlinger as Treasurer?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and so, Dave Farlinger will be our Treasurer. Nominations are now in order for the Office of Clerk.
Guys, what are some of the duties of the Clerk, or what is the main duty of the Clerk?
Keep meeting minutes.
Okay.
When capacity isn't here, and then you sign contracts and a lot of that kind of stuff.
I make a motion for Chad as Clerk. Are there any further nominations for Clerk? Are there any further nominations for the Office of Clerk? Okay. All those in favor of Chad for the position of Clerk, respond.
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, so I will take a motion to be made for Chad as Clerk.
I'll make a motion to have Chad as Clerk.
Second.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, Chad is our Clerk. All right. Moving on to item eight. This is about setting our regular monthly school board meeting. In the past, we have met the third Tuesday of the month at 6:00. Would anyone like to have a discussion as to a different time that would work better for them, or is this satisfactory?
It works good.
Well, I guess I'll make a motion to set the regular monthly school board meetings for the third Tuesday of the month at 6:00 PM in the High School Media Center or School Board Conference Room.
Second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, that the time for our regular school board meetings will be the third Tuesday of the month at 6:00 PM in the High School Media Center or School Board Conference Room. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. All right. On a motion, we are going to talk about the school district law firm, legal counsel, and in the past, we've had Adams, Rizzi, and Sweene out of Austin, and the school board chair and the superintendent are the contacts. Okay, I would take a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to approve Adam, Rizzi, and Sweene of Austin as the school's contact or lawyer.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Okay. Number 10 is a motion for the school district to name the First State Bank of Leroy as the depository for the school district. So I will look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the First State Bank of Leroy, Minnesota as the depository for the school district.
I'll second it.
Do I need to repeat that before I say, "All in favor"?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that is approved. All right, now, the next one, I have to have a wee bit of a discussion before we move on to it. When I was reading through this, okay, the resolution combining the duties of the Clerk and the Treasurer, that is, that we have a position of a Clerk and we have a position of a Treasurer on the school board, but the day-to-day duties are done by another person, often in the business department, okay? And so, by resolution, we as a school board can say, state that we will, that that's what we're doing, we're having another person actually do the work, and then the Treasurer does a lot of follow-up, and the Clerk signs the papers and things like that. So, it says, "Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B Point 14 subdivision 1 empowers the school board to combine the duties of the Office of the Clerk and the Treasurer of the school board in one person in the Office of Administration of the school district." Okay, that is not exactly what that statute says. And so, it popped into my head because in all the years that I've worked here, the Superintendent has not been the designated person, it has not been someone in administration. Okay, so, what it actually says is, "The board by resolution may combine the duties of the offices of the Clerk and the Treasurer in a single person in the Office of Business Affairs." So, I think we should change this to, I think we should correct that, because if we're going to state something that's in the statutes, we should have the correct words.
And you can, for sure, it's because I have oversight to that department, that's why we changed it to Superintendent. But if you want to put it back to business management, that's perfectly fine, because I still have oversight of that.
Right.
So, perfectly fine.
I think it should be that way.
Perfect. Exactly as the statute, yeah.
Follow the statute, and, so... The school board in one person in the Office of Business Affairs. Whereas the school district has decided to combine the duties of Clerk and Treasurer in one person in administration, I think we should put... Off, I don't know what we should put there, because it's not administration.
Can we just put the person that does it? That position, I shouldn't say person.
The position?
The position that does it, which would be the...
What would be the title that we, we'd start, we advertise it as admini...
Confidential Administrative Assistant.
Right, I don't know what other titles he's carrying right now.
Or are you thinking Business Manager Millering?
Well, I'm not, because...
Have we done this portion before?
We were supposed to.
Oh, okay.
Not last year, it didn't happen.
No, I, no, we...
We just didn't remember it before.
It's always been, it's always been the Administrative Assistant that has done that.
I mean, Kristy Millering can't be here at all of our meetings, she's not in the building every day, I think we need to have it be a person, you know, like, it's always been a person who is working full-time for our school district and is here to, you know, make copies if the school board needs it, or, you know, get the agendas out to us, or whatever the different duties are, it's always, you know, Ben. I don't know exactly what the title is that we're currently going with, but I'm not, I'm thinking, it's always been, you know, it used to be called the Administrative Secretary, Administrative Assistant.
Can we look at the November agenda and see what we approved that as, and just change it to that?
What we approved, his position.
Right.
Yeah, we did just hire him.
Confidential Administrative Assistant, is that what?
That's what I'm...
That's what we advertised.
Agenda, that was November 15th. No, that was the 30th, so... I'm not finding it.
Okay.
Hold on, November 9th? Confidential, okay, was the November 9th agenda, confidential district office accounts payable position.
The emails from Cass say, Cass Mills, accounts payable, district, yeah, Leroy Elsner, Public Schools, accounts payable.
Okay. I don't know, whatever you guys want on.
Not accounts payable, because it's, it's a lot, his, that's when he's sending us information about finances.
Right.
But, I mean, that's not his title.
Yeah.
I'd either say confidential administrative assistant, confidential district... What did it say? What did he do?
Confidential District Office Accounts Payable Position, so confidential district office assistant, could fall in there slash accounts payable position, I, whatever you guys think.
I don't have that paper in front of me of what we, what we, uh...
I don't have it either. So I mean, that's...
I'm actually fine with it saying Superintendent, because the Superintendent's responsible for all of it anyway.
Right, but this is a resolution, who performs those duties? So I mean, Jen is our part-time Superintendent, she's not going to do all that busy work, obviously.
Is it normal?
I mean, I mean, sorry, sorry.
Is it normal?
I just put confidential administrative assistant.
That's what I said.
Okay.
Okay, let's go with that.
Sure.
So, whereas the school district decided to combine the duties of the Clerk and Treasurer in one person in the confidential administrative assistant, therefore be it resolved that the confidential administrative assistant of the school district is designated by the school board of Independent School District Number 499 to perform the duties of Clerk and Treasurer in the district. Okay, this is a resolution, I believe we have to do a roll call vote.
Yes.
Okay, and you're going to tally, you're going to keep track of this clerk, right? You're going to mark it.
Who's gonna?
You are.
Who?
Oh, the new clerk.
Old habits, Deb.
Sorry, sorry, okay, clerk, you're going to, you're going to tally this now, okay? All right, so, and I'm going to use this up here at the top for help, so, I'll read it again, "The resolution combining the duties of Clerk and Treasurer, whereas Minnesota State Statute 123B Point 14 subdivision 1 empowers the school board to combine the duties of the offices of Clerk and Treasurer of the school board in one person in the Office..."
Business Affairs. Business Affairs.
Of Business Affairs, thank you, in the Office of Business Affairs. Okay. Whereas the school district is decided to combine the duties of Clerk and Treasurer in one person in the confidential administrative assistant, therefore, be it resolved that the confidential administrative assistant of the school district is designated by the school board of Independent School District Number 499 to perform the duties of Clerk and Treasurer of the district. Okay, so, roll call, Arndorfer?
Aye.
Lunning?
Yep.
Stern?
Aye.
Farlinger?
Aye.
Rayburn? Yes? Bundy?
Yes.
Lewison?
Yes.
Okay. Number 12. All right, so, this is the committees that we also sit on, that whenever we meet with any of these groups, we, it has to become an open meeting because they're there, and then we are just, we can bring information back to the school board, we can share information with the group, okay? So... So, the number one one here, the number one is Community Education and ECFE. And there's only, I mean, you, you mentioned on here one needed, but I don't know why we went down from two to one.
We were talking at our first Community Education meeting as a group, and it was just mentioned, is this small enough group with just one voice needed from the board?
But what if one of us can't attend?
You would probably then assign a secondary person to call and ask, and that time, they would be your person, your board rep. You can have board reps.
Huh?
There was three.
Yeah.
Because I was on two.
And who else, yeah? So there was...
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Chad.
There was three. I mean, I, I would feel a lot better going down to two, because that way, if one of us can't be there, the other one can, and we can contact each other to make sure, hey, are you going to be there? So let's go with two. So who would like to be on the Community Education ECFE Committee, these are called? Do you want to stay on this?
I'll stay.
Chad? Okay? And, that's my field, so, I would like to stay on it. I would like to remain on that one.
I'm good with that.
Okay. All right, so then, the next one is meet and confer. It says one to two needed, two is the absolute minimum, there were three previously. I mean, one is not enough, that's not enough voice. So this is, you meet with the teachers periodically, you meet with them and set up an agenda, and then you have a discussion, and it's a chance for us to bring ideas, thoughts to them, and for them to bring ideas, thoughts, and concerns to us. Intended to be an open communication. Intended to be an open communication.
Is this once a month or?
We've, we...
How do you?
It's, it's not once a month.
I think it's a minimum of four times a year, I do believe.
I can't...
That we offer, or you have to offer it or something?
Right, yes, that's it.
Yeah.
Yes. We don't have to necessarily meet four times, we have to offer the teachers that we, opportunity to meet at least four times.
Yeah, we used to do it every month and it really seemed like we were just kicking the same thing every time.
Yeah.
And that's why we moved away from it.
Okay.
That was a little too much, I thought.
I'd, I'd, uh, be interested in that if there's room there with you and Chad.
Are you, do you two guys want to stay on it? I would do it if you didn't want to. I'll just leave it that way. But if you guys want to be on it, then you stay on. I'm fine either way.
I'm interested. I don't want to get onto too many committees, but, um, I'm interested.
Well, I, I guess I like having Deb on there because you were a staff member.
Yeah.
I think that carries a lot of, a lot of things.
So Chad, do you want to continue on there or do you want?
That's fine.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that? Chad, Deb, and Kyle? Okay. MSBA liaison?
Mm-hmm. Was that Teresa before? I forget, I don't remember.
Yeah, I don't know.
Just to stay current with what the MSBA is offering us to, like, by way of training and information.
I can do it. Usually we get emails. I mean, everybody will get their emails and that's, that's the biggest thing. I guess if there's something specific to point out, yeah, I, I can do it if that's okay.
All righty. MSHLS, Minnesota State High School League. Currently Dave Lunning has been doing that.
I can do it.
Okay. Okay, scholarship committee?
I would stay on that.
Okay. Chad, do you want to stay on that?
I would stay too.
Okay. Certified negotiations?
I'll stay on it.
I'll stay on it.
I'd get on that one if you're looking for a third.
Okay. Non-certified negotiations? Currently Tim and I are on that one.
I'd like to stay. We're, I mean, we're done for a couple.
Yep. I'd like to not be on that one. If, if someone else would like to step into that position. It was a good experience, but, um, maybe as chair I'll step off of some, huh?
Do you negotiate this year?
We did it. We just did it this year.
Teachers are this year.
Teachers, so certified, certi...
So basically that one's not really doing anything this year.
I guess it's not going to do much.
No.
Yeah. I should put, can we just put somebody on there?
I, I can...
Dave? Okay, thank you, Dave. All right. Um, SMEC, board representative? You went to the meeting?
I can do that.
Okay. You went and tried it out and you were willing to go for it, huh?
Yeah.
Um, district policy review? Who, how, who else is on that committee? Teacher?
So it's Cass and Teresa.
Yeah.
And then we have teachers and Erin and I, I think that's it.
Who, who like, um, calls that meeting?
I will, we, it's scheduled for the Tuesday before the board meeting, so the second Tuesday of the month.
Okay.
And I send the agenda out. So I create the agenda and send it. And it's based off all the previous meetings.
And it's, it's, and it's, um, teachers, board members, okay? Reviewing the policies.
MSBA policies. Or sometimes we bring up statute too, just to talk about.
Anybody interested in being on the district policy review? Okay, thanks, Dave. It's a great way to dive in and learn what's all the policies are, right? It's an amazing amount. It's an amazing amount. But we do them in little bits and chunks, so you don't have to do the whole book. What is it?
Seven hundred pages.
Yeah. But we do it in little chunks.
Don't fall over, don't fall over.
Is there anybody else who'd like to be on that? Okay, I guess I will be on that. Buildings, grounds, and safety. We currently have Lunning and Lewison on there.
I'd be willing.
Okay. Mauer County Collaborative, this is new. Do you want to say anything about it?
You know, honestly, I don't know much about it. Teresa had been doing it for the past few years.
And what was she doing?
Honestly, I don't know what it is.
I don't know if they ever did anything with it. I think, I just don't even remember hearing anything about it, I guess, in the past. So you sit on it and basically that's it.
I mean, it wasn't even on our list before.
No.
Okay. And then, so, board, um, do we want to look into that before and see if we want to participate in some type of a collaborative? I could ask Teresa more about it.
Yeah, we could.
Let's not assign anybody to it.
Yeah, I'd like to maybe know a little bit more before I walk into the darkroom.
Let's, I'll, I'll try to find more and bring that back to the next meeting. And then, what, can you explain a little bit more about the systems accountability?
You bet.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So the systems accountability that was on here before, really, if you look at our world's best workforce, that is what it is. What it talks about is curriculum, instruction, assessments, student assessments such as our MCAs, uh, maybe we'll talk about FastBridge, things like that. But really it is a method, a local site method of actually looking at our federal and state guidelines for world's best workforce. That is something we need to do annually every year is talk about, hey, what are we doing in the classroom? And really get deeper into how we're grading students, you know? How are we assessing their needs and wants and desires, but also their academic behaviors? Um, what's happening in that classroom? Also, what kind of instructional techniques are we developing our teachers in? Where are they currently at? And then where we need to go in terms of standards, what the teachers need to teach in the classroom? So our systems accountability has turned into, which is already a federal and state, well, it's more federal than state, but state has to grasp on to those federal laws, it is our world's best workforce.
Okay.
There we go. That is such a nutshell though, so I apologize for that.
Are school board members already on that?
Yes, current, well, Kyle was on it as a community member, so you can continue to be on it. Cass was on it. He'll become a staff member if he so chooses. And Dave was a board member on it. And so if he so chooses, world's best workforce.
I mean, should that be listed in our committees, though?
Um, it can be, but because we haven't even met yet for this year, we can wait and I can bring it back to you in January if you so choose. Or we can list it today. It's totally up to you guys. Either way, either way.
Are you still, Kyle, are you interested in staying on that? And Dave, are you interested in staying on that? How does the board feel about just having that be in our groups? I mean, since we're listing our committees, how about if we just list whatever number that would be next? Depending on what we do with the collaborative, world's best workforce as ours, our committee.
Call it number 12 for now.
Okay.
And just say world's best workforce.
Okay.
And then Dave and Kyle.
Is that, everybody okay with that?
No.
All right.
So we did have a finance committee too, with that.
Finance committee has always historically been in this district, and this is pretty common. It would be our chairperson and our clerk, I believe. No, Deb, what were you? Treasurer, I'm sorry. And treasurer. But that is when we meet with the auditors, they expect those two positions to come to the table. So it's not really a committee, it's more of a listening session and then they report back to all of you. So it's just, it always has been, and I highly recommend it continue to be that way. Our chair and our, our treasurer be our auditor's connection.
Right.
I guess you could say.
Okay. All right. So that should take care of number 12. And then, under that...
Deb, can I get a motion?
Yeah. I was just going to say, I think we need a motion to approve the people that are on the committees.
Okay. I'd like to get, receive a motion for these people to be on the committees.
I'll make a motion to approve the list that we made up of people to be on the committees.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that is approved. Compensation for school board members, currently $35 per school board regular meeting. Okay. Not special meetings?
I believe...
They're usually included.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you still 35 at special?
I don't know.
I think so.
I'm just reading what says here. It says regular meeting. I guess we can...
And special.
Yeah.
We'll put it.
School board regular and special meetings? Not, it's not when you're sitting on a committee and when you go to a committee meeting, it's not included in that. Am I correct, everyone?
That's correct.
Okay. But if we have a regular or special school board meeting, in the past it's been $35 per meeting, um...
Stipend for the board chair.
Yes. What, is, oh, so the, it says compensation for school board members and then it just says is set at blank and blank, blank stipend per year for the school board chair.
So we'll want to fill in 35 if that's okay with everybody.
We want to leave it the same. It'll be 35 and 400.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion for that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for the compensation for school board members for regular board meetings and special board meetings at $35 each meeting and $400 stipend per year for the school board chair.
Okay. Motion, second?
A second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes. I will now adjourn a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Who's second, dude?
Dave, are you?
All in favor?
Aye.
Time is 6:44.